Right, a little after. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order if you'd all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
Republic. One nation.
In his. And liberty, justice for all.
The next item is to have a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lou. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. The next item is executive session. It's a pending claim and litigation of the O'Keefe, and it's a settlement. And we are going to go into executive session, and it will be with Attorney Tom Gerard. I don't know if Tom Robinson wants to join us. He is our Director of Finance and our Risk Manager. So let the record reflect that it will, the executive session will include Mr. Gerard and Mr. Robinson. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lou. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the people that we will have in the separate room, Nick, will be Attorney Gerard along with Mike. I called you.
If privacy is on so it doesn't ring during the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I probably didn't switch.
I had my ringer off. I got, I didn't get a text.
No, I didn't text you.
Oh, you didn't text.
I didn't follow instructions.
Okay. Sorry.
We have Mr. Robinson. Yeah, we came out of executive session at 8:04. And this is the motion that's going to be read. I wrote it out for you, so make it easier. Do we have everybody back?
I think this selectmen have to unmute. The other selectmen.
We are on mute still?
No, the, the selectmen on Zoom are still on mute, but now everybody's off mute.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're on item number five. Decision on executive session pending claim and litigation, O'Keefe settlement. And I think Jim Tripp has a motion to read.
Yep. I make a motion that in the case of commission on human rights and opportunities, and Kathy O'Keefe individually and as administrator of the estate of Richard O'Keefe versus the town of Portland, to consent to the settlement reached between our insurance carrier and attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lou Pear. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom Gerard, for your assistance as our attorney, and thank you to Kerma as well.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Good. Thanks.
The next item is number six, approval of minutes for the regular May 19, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lou. Any changes, errors, or omissions? Go ahead. Mr. Pear?
On page seven, it says Lou Pear gave an update on the award recognition of the Green Way. It should say Green Way. One word.
Thank you, Lou. Any other changes? So the motion will reflect that change. It's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I have no communications or correspondence tonight, so we'll move on to public comment. Nick, is there any public comment? At this point, we have no public comment. We'll go into racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. And Jim Tripp has a report on behalf of April Graves, who can't be here tonight. Jim?
Thank you. April sent her a report in via text because she was not able to be here tonight. Actually, she was having some reception issues, so she wishes she could be here. But her reporters at the task force will be hosting their second annual youth diversity forum on Sunday, June 13th, at 1:00 PM at the gazebo on the town green, followed by our Juneteenth event on Saturday, June 19th. Juneteenth will include speakers, poetry, singing, music, food trucks, and children's activities.
Thank you. Item number 10 is reentry committee, discussion of services and programs. And I've asked Mary Pott to come and report on some information from Chatham Health on behalf of the senior center. And Mary, if you could take a spot at the podium, please. Thank you. Thanks for coming, Mary.
Well, Susan had given me an option of writing a report, coming on Zoom, where I thought, you know what? I've got good news, so I'm coming in person to deliver that good news. We had a meeting on Friday. Our Chatham Health District Director called together the senior centers in Chatham Health District. And their feeling is that with the high level of seniors that are vaccinated in Chatham Health District, including in Portland, that we are able to open our doors to our senior population again and resume to have all of the activities that we were having, including if we so choose to have entertainment coming in and serving meals. Of course, without a kitchen right now that we can work with, we'd have to order that food, but we can do all that. We can have inside exercise programs, any other activities that were ongoing before the shutdown with the pandemic. So as I said, I felt it was good news. I wanted to bring that to you, and I think it's pretty exciting. I'm proposing that the 14th of June, which is two weeks, would be the day that will give everybody time that we can get the word out. So all those programs, for instance, we have the exercise program that's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They have been, on most of those days, able to meet at the new park, which has been a wonderful opportunity for them. But I think now that we're gonna have probably, what, rain on Friday or 90 degrees next week, they're going to say, we're done. We don't want to do this anymore. So we're gonna be able to give them that opportunity to come back. And as I said, he felt it was very safe to be able to do that.
Any questions for Mary?
I just have a comment to make. The 14th is a very auspicious day.
It's Flag Day.
June 14th is Flag Day.
Yes.
So it's a great day to open up.
It is a great day to open up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions or comments for Mary from the selectmen?
Just thank you for coming. It's nice to see you in person delivering good news.
As I said, I thought that was well worth coming, delivering good news. Because every time I've come before you before and Zoomed, it hasn't been really good news.
I, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the reopening of the Portland Waverly Senior Center in keeping with the recommendations of the Chatham Health District as presented by Mary tonight. Mary Pott.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Lou. Any further discussion? And a big thank you to you, Mary, and to Carol Ravicky for all your work in getting us through this pandemic, along with all the other folks.
All the seniors are going to be yipping all over Portland, so.
All right, let's take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Yeah, it's a much nicer motion to take tonight than some of the others that we've had to adhere to. So again, thank you, Mary. We appreciate it.
We're still gonna hold off on regular, any other kind of meeting. It's gonna be basically the seniors that are gonna be there. The only thing that we have to be aware, now that you've moved it when you're opening, transportation, they're still gonna have to wear a mask on the bus. And if we have any of the toenail clippings, hairdresser, any of that, they all have to wear a mask as well. So we're gonna make sure of that. And a posted sign that if you are not vaccinated, you need to wear a mask while in the building. So those are just a few specifications.
And that's all in keeping with the recommendations from Chatham Health.
Yes, it is.
All right. Again, thank you very much, Mary.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
The next is an item that our Finance Director will be explaining to us. Resolution for supplemental appropriation for police private duty expense and increase to estimated police private duty revenue. This is in accordance with Section 1203.3 of the Town Charter. A public hearing is going to be needed in this regard. Tom, do you want to give us a brief explanation?
So even, as we've been stating this year, there's been a lot of police private duty, police private duty revenue, as well as police private duty expense. So when we go over to the budget report, you'll see that the expense is, is over already by $115,000, $117,000. And we expect another $28,000 for June or so to be expended. revenues are already over budget to date at $145,000 on the police private duty lineups. We think that that's a reasonable item to put a revenue and expense there to increase the revenue and increase the expense so that the budget, the police budget will be more reflective of what's actually occurring due to the activity. I mean, the main topic is the work on the Aragoni Bridge. It's, there was also, there was time, there was daytime. So on the, on the first, on the first paragraph, I should say, daytime and nighttime shifts, it shouldn't say time day.
Whereas construction work being performed on the Aragoni Bridge.
At daytime.
At daytime and night shifts.
Right.
Well, it, yeah, our day and night shifts.
Day and night shifts? Yeah. Has prompted a need for more private duty police jobs to ensure public safety.
The actual, the, the second, the second paragraph could, can actually be removed.
So we'll take out the second, whereas the city of Middletown has used and so forth, we'll take that out?
Correct.
Okay.
We have, they have done that. It has occurred, but it's not to the, what's driving the increases is the Aragoni Bridge project and the daytime and the nighttime shifts.
And the companies that are doing work in Portland are required to pay for the town's police private duty services. That's correct. And whereas revenues in line item 010000000324, police private duty, have come in and are expected to continue to increase higher than originally budgeted. And whereas the related private police duty expenditure line item numbered 01-023000-14014 is expected to exceed its original budgeted amount by $145,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the supplemental appropriation of $145,000 to the general fund line item 0102300014014, police private duty, and an increase in estimated revenue to the line item numbered 010000000324, police private duty in amount of $145,000. Is there a motion to approve this resolution as edited?
So moved.
Seconded by Lou. Any questions for Tom? Selectmen? Okay. Are you ready for the question? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. And the next item, I unfortunately, I did not email this because I had copies made. So I will put these copies in the selectmen's boxes who couldn't be here tonight. And I think it's easier to read to than online. But Tom had some highlights that he wanted to give in his report, and then you can refer back to these at another time. Tom?
Yeah, so from the, we've provided you the revenue report.
Can everybody hear Tom okay on Zoom?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We've provided the revenue report for the general fund. And the report shows the current year taxes are coming in strong. Prior years, not as strong as we'd anticipated, but still doing well. Interest and liens is a little lower than we've expected. Again, we did have the, a time period where we allowed a lower interest rate, so that's expected after the budget was put in place. When we go to the, the ECS money, that would be our line item 00101. That, that, all the monies that have come in are, will come in. The $61,923 will not come in. There are adjustments seen yearly for excess cost. They come in with that number, and those were a part of that, that adjustment. And then as we go down to 00207, it's the emergency management line. So so far, we've exceeded this line item quite a bit, and that's due to the fact of the CRF monies that came in, the $66,000 that we had received earlier in the year. Those were to offset some of the police patrolling due to the coronavirus, as well as we provided money to the Chatham Health District at an amount. And then we also purchased some technology that we needed as well. That line item could possibly see an influx of over $150,000 to even a little bit more. And that's based on the East, the FEMA work that Paul Horstrecher Shea, Susan and myself have been doing related to the FEMA, you said, ESAE SIS storm. And so that information is submitted to the state, to the federal government. Then they'll review it, and they'll pass through the state once approved. Continuing on, this month here, due to the earlyness, the early of this meeting, we're here on the second day of the month. The hosting activity for the town clerks department was not available. So activity does continue to remain strong. So hopefully have the activity for May in our next report, as well as, as well as June. So that's, but they, but conveyance tax is the strong, recording fees are strong. So we wanted to just let you know that, if you saw that number, if you saw monthly activity of zero, it's not that there's zero activity. It's just that it hasn't been posted at this time. 0324, police private duty, as we said, that's a number that we expected, 197, 197,000. We, we've already received 342,000. And we still have some receivable activity from April. We almost have all of May outstanding, and we'll have June. So there'll be some decent numbers coming in for those as well, which are needed. Is there some other revenue factors that are, that are off, that are lower? So we, you know, as we, as we noted, some of the prior interest was a little bit lower. We have not received structural permits to the levels that we anticipated. Interest income, the interest rates have been very, very low. When interest rates get low, then there's amounts that are maintained if the banks go up as well to not have bank fees. So it's kind of a double and short. You have to have more in your operating bank. And then in the banks where you have money, you're receiving interest, you, you have less, less money there, able to have money there. And you're also receiving a lower interest. So it's a, at a level, interest rates right now, it's very, very challenging to get interest, as you'll see, as you see. But, but, you know, so we have some positives and some negatives on the revenue. But, yeah, that's, that's the information. And on page two, you'll, you'll see where we have the investment income. We, we thought 60,000 at the time. That was, the interest rates were still quite strong at the time we did the last year's budget. And we're, we're not even hitting 25,000, or we just hit 25,000. And some of that will need to get reallocated during funds, so that's, that's, that's a challenge. It'll be a challenge next year as well, I'm sure. The sale of the town property, that the, the property is being marketed, I believe. And, you know, we, I think you guys, that was budgeted next year's revenue. So the likelihood is that would probably come in as a next year revenue source.
So your total percentage that you expect to still receive is 0.8%? Is that, am I reading that right, Tom? Of what we anticipated? The total percentage?
0.80?
0.80? Yep.
Yeah, so 0.80, it's $280,000 is which we're, we're under in the revenue to the projected amount. So that's, as I said, we still have some of May to collect, which was the town clerks revenues. And we'll have June activity, as well as private duty from May and June. And then, again, also hopefully we'll get the FEMA activity, the reimbursement for the ESAE SIS storm.
Did we get the foundation permit for Brainer Place? Does that come in? Or potentially would come in before the end of this fiscal year?
It should.
Right?
It should. It's $30,000 that they're supposed to send.
Yes.
That might come in in June, I would think. So we'll move on to the expenditures. On page one, the probate court, we spoke of that before, that's over budget due to the fact that they do have rent, more space, so we had more rent. Elections, elections so far have stayed within their budget, but we, they, there's still some activities left to occur generally during June. The registrars do canvassing, as well as some other activities that we'll go through, some other supplies may need to be purchased. And we did though have grant activity to cover over any of the overages that we do have or other line item overages that we have. So that's a, that's a positive. Page seven. This is, page seven is showing the police department. Says if you look at line 101200014014, police private duty, we budgeted $152,000 in that. $5,500 we received, we've expended to date 269,000, an overage of 117,000. Expect about $28,000 to be spent in June. So that would, that gets you to the 145,000 that we've been discussing. Page seven. Town engineer budget in totality right now is, is doing pretty good, but there are the months of May, the month of June to go. So we'll keep watching that budget. That's one that we've, you know, at times we have trouble when there's more activity in this, in these past months. As, as the weather gets better, there's generally more activities. Page nine, we've been speaking of the planning department and zoning department. The zoning department will be showing an over budget, and the planning department is to the positive, to the good. So those shall work itself out, but there's that matter. And then, like we've said in, the page 13, it posted the inner fund transfer out to the Open Space Land Acquisition Fund as required by ordinance. So we did make that posting. Well, we may have to move on a cybersecurity insurance policy for this year, as that's how this seems to be playing out. So Susan and I will review that and try to make a decision to, to see how that all, how it works out the rest of the year. Any other questions? Thank you.
Are there any questions for Tom? If not, we'll move on to number 13. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions tonight?
Nope.
Refunds of excess payments?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we refund the amount of $202.50 to Jeffrey S. Sarah.
Second it.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And I make a motion that we refund the amount of $112.08 to Christopher Bongo and Karen Bongo.
Second it.
Ralph, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next is status reports.
So I guess I could start. Not much, the only thing to report is we did open up the splash pad last week, which really didn't serve much of a purpose on a day, on a weekend that rained the entire time. But I heard there may have been some people on Monday, so we did have some people on Monday. But I'm gonna guess it's gonna get a whole lot of use on this weekend, because it's gonna be different than last week.
All right, just a couple of items from with the Board of Education meeting last, last night. Graduation, which is two weeks from tonight. The, in accordance with the policies and the decision was made, students will be in masks. But in terms of the folks going to observe, they're gonna, if it's outdoors, it's gonna be a standard outdoor event. No masks are required for guests and other attendees, as long as they are vaccinated. Effectively, the, the message was is that they're designing the event to be, they're designing the event assuming that folks are vaccinated if they can be. So it's, if folks show up, it's, they're on their own, sort of their own honor in terms of protecting themselves. And the other interesting is, we had talked a little bit about this last time, last meeting, is that the Board of Ed had to take a look at a bylaws change, because their bylaws and, and their policies coming out of the pandemic didn't allow them to do hybrid meetings absent the executive order. So last night, they did have a meeting, and they, they did adopt a change to their bylaws that will allow that. So, so they were able to resolve that situation.
Very good. Any other reports?
Jim, what, what time is graduation on the 16th?
It's six o'clock.
Yeah.
And the, selectmen, are we all going? We usually go to that.
As, as a general rule, yeah, we get an invite, so I would assume that'll be the same this year. We'll get an invite from the, from the admin.
Yes, so mark it in your calendar.
Yep.
We were scheduled to meet that night. We will not be meeting.
That's right. It's a Board of Selectmen. Okay.
That meeting is, thank you.
Which means.
Cancelled or rescheduled? Are we just skipping it?
Well, we are meeting on the 23rd of June in a special meeting. And, and you know what? You remind me that we need to go back and make a motion to have the public hearing for the police private duty on June 23rd at 6:30. Can I have a motion to that effect? I don't know that I did that.
No, you didn't.
Wait, wait. I have a, just one second. There is a, there is a public hearing requirement. There is no town meeting requirement. So we don't have to vote on it, but we do have to have a public hearing. So that public hearing, if I could have a motion to approve to have a public hearing on the supplemental appropriation for police private duty expense and increase to estimated police private duty revenue to be held on the 23rd. I'll say at 6:30 PM in this room, the Buck Foreman community.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. And then on the 23rd, Rick, we are having the training on racial equity inclusion. And that'll be.
At 7? What time is?
7, yes.
Okay.
And that is scheduled to be an hour, and our speaker will be Zoom in, so our audience can watch it. And we will be in this room if, if at all possible, we ask you to attend.
Could I ask a question before we leave this? Could I ask a question before we leave this part? It came up during the Board of Directors meeting for the library. The discussion was and I know obviously we've talked at length about the Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen about how they can meet going forward, hybrid or whatever. They were asking at that meeting about what the plan will be going forward for the smaller because there obviously is work to be done if you do it zoom, if you combine. So what is going to be the stand in terms of the smaller commissions and their meetings? Are they going to have the option for doing a hybrid as well? Or what are we going to do with that?
They really will need to meet in person. I don't know the availability of this room, Ralph. And we pay extra to have staff here to run these meetings. And we've never tape recorded other meetings. So unless they want to use their own phone, which you can do to have Zoom available. I don't plan on having staff here.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but I just figured we'd I'd I'd ask the questions. I could go back and share with.
Believe that executive order from the governor expires this month.
So it's him where they would meet in person unless they were to have a Zoom call on their own devices like but they'd have to announce that if they they were.
Yeah, you're supposed to be meeting in person if at all possible. We allow telephone and we allow people to use Zoom as part of our FOI requirement. But we are meeting in person so the public can attend. So as much as possible, there should be at least some of their meetings in person. Some of the members should be there.
Yeah.
Kind of going back to the way it was before.
Yeah, and I figured I just I'll convey that to them.
I know the Water and Sewer Commission, for example, who's been meeting with teleconference at six is resuming. Just going to be resuming their meetings on Mondays now at seven. Now, actually, I think the first one that they'll be in person will be this coming Monday as the first Monday of the month.
Thank you. Lou, your turn.
Your line failed. Just letting everybody know that the Connecticut Trail Day is Saturday. And it starts at 10 o'clock. And those people that are interested in joining the group, there'll be two groups walking about four miles. They can make it less if they like, but a total walk from start to finish is about four miles. And looks like you're going to have a nice day. So please join us on Saturday at 10 o'clock for the Connecticut Trails Day.
Thank you. Any other status reports tonight from selectmen?
You know, I'll just I'll just say the other day we had a really good meeting with our congressman here in this room, Congressman Larson, and the main focus of that conversation was infrastructure and and the topics and basically the American Recovery Act and Rescue Plan and how it's going to help us out. And the components of it. We got to focus in on a little bit and he was he listened and I think which we appreciated the discussion back and forth about really one of our biggest infrastructure challenges, which is our water and sewer. And some of the plans that we have going forward. Something, you know, conceptually and what we need to do and the challenges both from a cost standpoint that we're encountering now as well as, you know, how we're going to finance and implement a suitable solution. So it's a good discussion and I think there'll be more on that going forward.
Sure. Thank you. Nick, is there any public comment?
Yeah, we had one comment from Don Goon. I think it's a little irrelevant now, but he said, Mary, can the social clubs meet in the evenings?
I would recommend, Don, that you get a hold of Mary in that regard.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I will follow up on that as well, Don, because I owe Don a call on another matter. General informal discussion.
Do I have a question? A quick one for Ralph?
Go ahead.
Yep.
So Ralph, with with 90 degrees coming here by the weekend, is the splash pad going to be working? I was reading today that there might have been some issues getting the splash pad functioning and working.
Yes, that was someone that incorrectly stated stuff on Facebook.
I'm shocked.
There is no issue with the splash pad. The the thing that is left with the work that was being done in the splash pad and the irrigation system is the last some final wiring that has to be done so that it can be a fully automated system.
Beautiful.
For now, the problem is is that you have to you're manually turning the splash pad on and off until that's set up. So so Nate Nate Foley is going to have staff there to make sure they could turn it on and turn it off over the weekend. So the plan, I think, is one to five on the weekend.
Right. And I spoke with Nate about that, Mike, and we concluded that since school isn't out and really the summer is starting, obviously, but for the month of June, the splash pad will be open and staffed and the bathrooms will be open Saturday and Sunday from one to five. That way, there's continuity as well as as people can plan their splash pad time. That's what we'll do for June. And then by by then, the automation should be in place. So we should be able to have things fully functional in terms of the daytime when more people are available in July.
Beautiful. All right, thank you.
So it's ready for you, Mike.
I am so ready for this.
Lou, Lou, you're next.
Okay. I have a statement I'd like to read.
Sure.
I was shocked at what was in the newspaper about the high school, about the superintendent and the chairwoman of the Board of Education. I thought maybe I could say something.
Absolutely.
I don't think it was right. The recent disgraceful protest was demeaning and definitely lacked good judgment. In an unprecedented pandemic, the superintendent, school board members, school staff had to focus on the safety and the safest delivery of instruction following state health department guidelines. In this school year, students have transitioned from virtual to hybrid and now to in-person instruction. This difficult task has been done with student safety and education issues always at the forefront. That successful transition are a testament to what's with educational leaders, the school nurses and the facilities. From the start, our students have had available and necessary home books so that they would be able to learn. They have been kept safe by wearing masks and social distancing. As much as possible, students have been given breaks by being outdoors and breaks from wearing masks. As infection rates have decreased, the educational leaders have adapted to allow participation in athletic programs, school clubs and in-person graduations. Instead of demeaning our school leaders, one should commend them for guiding staff and students through this complicated these complicated circumstances and keeping our children safe. I, like many, am very grateful for such an exemplary school leader.
I would like to make a motion that we all endorse your statement, Lou.
I will second that motion.
And any further discussion?
And the only thing I would say, you know, we certainly have the rights to disagree with with what policies may be. But as Sharon and I spoke before the meeting that we had earlier, no one has ever approached the Board of Ed at a public statement to say anything about having a problem with masks. But yet we have someone protesting out there. So they've never gone the route of standing before the Board of Ed and have anything to say if they don't agree with it. So we certainly have the rights to protest things, but you should follow the format that we have in order to do.
Just along with that statement, they have the right to protest, but not the way they do.
Exactly.
Agreed.
There's a difference between protest and hate speech. And that line was crossed.
Yeah, it was a very difficult situation, to say the least, and I think it was so so offensive to our leaders. And I've issued a lot of statements in the paper as well as issued a public statement from our state leaders as well as our regional leaders. And it's just a horrible thing that I hope never happens again. And it certainly has no place in terms of the method, as you stated, not the fact that someone is protesting. That's not an issue. But to bring up hate symbol of such a heinous situation of not to and it's just totally inappropriate.
Susan, it's Mike again. Were there any laws or any ordinances broken by what happened there? What's like the legal status, if there is any of that? I've been asked that question by a number of folks in town that were equally offended by the symbols that were used and whatnot. So what what's the status, I guess, of that? And are there any things that the town is doing or can do? I guess, to deal with that, whatever with whatever that means.
In in terms of any laws broken or rules or ordinances, as far as I've been told by FLE as well as other folks that gave us some good information and counsel on this, no, there is there is no further legal action that we are taking. However, there has been some discussion amongst some of our groups that we need to certainly make statements such as Lou made tonight and such has been made by other individuals in our community as well as many groups. And on behalf of the selectmen, the statement that I made to the press has heard, I've also reported the instance to the Anti-Defamation League, which is a national database that follows these types of hate crimes. And I did speak with the Connecticut representative, the president of a the ADL in Connecticut, as well as some further education and information that we can proceed with as a community. For example, Mike, on June 23rd, we're going to have a session with a professional trainer to talk about racial equity, inclusion, diversion and so forth. And certainly hate has no place in court.
Right. Well, did our our legal counsel or folks that we speak to consider this a hate crime? I know hate speech is a really vague and nebulous thing. But was that action considered a hate crime either at a federal level or state level?
Our police did confer and concluded that it is not.
Though our police, our police.
But they conferred with others as well, and it is not a hate crime. That's what I was informed shortly after, a few days after.
Okay.
Good question. And I would like the statement that Lou read to be part of the minutes, Laura, if you could put that in, that'd be great. Any other informal discussion tonight? I have nothing on the follow-up item, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion on his statement?
Oh, a vote, vote.
I mean, a vote, I meant. We didn't vote on.
All in favor? I'm saying. Aye.
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 Thank you.
Sorry, but thank you.
Thank you. And I guess we can adjourn.
Make a motion to be adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night.